We're gonna get started this evening if everyone would please quiet down. Thank you.
Of course, I can't go near the Y.
Welcome, everyone, to planning board for Thursday, March 25th. We'll start off with our usual administrative items up front, beginning with minutes from the previous meeting of March 11th. Anyone have any questions or...
That's yours.
The motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as recorded.
Second.
This is the last meeting, but wasn't our newest member present? I don't see his name.
Who's that?
That was the previous meeting. That was the previous meeting.
Was it the previous meeting?
Yeah, it was. I was absent last meeting.
Oh, we'll find out.
My meetings mixed up.
This was the short one.
That's right, that's the short one, I'm sorry. I remember that one well. All right, so you have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstaining. Abstaining, too. Let's see. Okay, it's time for us to do our annual election of officers again. Want to take care of that now or say that for later?
No, we've got to wait till 7:15 anyway, right?
Yeah, that's a good point. So we have a chair and vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I think, I think that chair should be on a rotating basis and, and you've done it for two years and having done it for time and then not, I like not being the chair. And this is, I don't want this to be a criticism of Lowell's chair, but we've established that procedure and I'd really like us to stay on it because in the old days, people were chair for a long time and became their board. And absent some compelling reason, Lowell's probably a particularly good chair, but I prefer that we continue to do that. But I don't want this to be a negative on Lowell, I just think having established that practice, it's probably a good thing to continue because it's, it's not Lowell's planning board or it used to be Gossett's planning board. And I don't think we want to go back there. And so I'm, it's solely for that reason, I was, I'm going to move that Allen, because it's his turn, he's been on, be the chair. But I want, I just want you to know my reasoning is this isn't, I just think we should share the burden, but also then it's all of our boards, no one person's board. And I'm picking on him because he's really next in line, I think. I didn't go down the lead ahead, but.
Well, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
I thank you all.
All right.
You're still sitting there this evening.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion that we keep Lowell on as we make the election effective as of the end of the meeting if Lowell's prepared for it, unless, you know, you guys want to do something different, but I think we'll do that.
We'll fight over it. Break time at the 8:30 break.
And I'm not gonna be here next time anyway, so that's good timing then, right?
And then do we have to do our vice chair?
Yeah, we should.
And I...
Because I went for like a year without having.
Yeah, you shouldn't have.
And I didn't think that was a good idea.
Well, just so planning knows who to contact about the meeting when the chair can't serve, we need to have somebody picked ahead of time.
I guess with the same spirit, I'd nominate Jim as the vice chair.
I'll second the motion.
So you mean I get off of CIP?
No. No, no conditions on that one. All right.
Taking other nominations?
Sure.
I just didn't know how you were doing it because it was a motion, you can't have two motions.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, let's go back, he's right, I'm getting ahead of myself.
No, I didn't know how you, you might just open it up for nominations.
Yeah, we could do that. Typically, that we haven't had more than once, but that's fine.
Thanks, Liz John.
So you, who did the second?
Well, if you want to act on the first one first, is wanting to know where it's going on the second.
Yeah.
Because I don't think we ever voted, did we?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no. You voted on Chairman's, not Chairman's.
Okay, okay, no. Be quiet then.
So, so we want to back up then?
I have no particular preference.
Well, if you did, we'd make sure you didn't get it.
I was gonna vol, I was gonna nominate you. So you better be careful. Oh, no, I didn't have it, I just didn't know what the pro, I was just asking about the process.
He's stalled.
Oh, you're just trying to be dramatic.
That's all, no, 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 I just, in case somebody else had something else in mind that I wanted to have them have the opportunity to make a recommendation if they wanted to.
All right, so but you didn't specifically?
No, no.
Did anyone else have any other nominations then? All right, let's go back and do that again then. All in favor, Tim for vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining. All right.
And I move that that also become effective as of the end of the meeting.
All right. Who was at the second of that one? All right. Then we have recommendation from conservation about a cutting.
Public service, when they did their scenic row public hearing, one of the conditions was that if they had to cut along or within the easement area, that they had to go back to conservation commission. So they did last night and conservation has no issues or concerns with the cutting as proposed. And they actually felt some of it needed to be cut. Especially from the storm.
Do we need any action on that? This is just a...
Um, they, it had to come back, their comment had to come back to you and that's their comment.
All right, so I guess we won't have any action on that.
Well, should we just say we have no comment and just so there's a...
Yeah, that one hurt.
Because I think the way that, if I recall, it was worded for our comments, we want something in the record that we have none, so.
Yes, because we always complain we don't get comments from other boards, so.
It'd probably be good to cover that, Lowell?
Yes, Tim.
I think actually we worded it that we, we were in, we wanted to just send it to them for their comment. I don't think we were looking for any...
Oh.
It was discussed at the meeting that night.
But it was approved, right?
Yes.
Yeah, with the condition and they don't have any issue.
Okay. All right, so it looks like that's the three items there. Give me us a couple minutes here, let's see.
Get on our correspondence.
Yeah, that's why I was just looking down at what we had here, we had...
I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
It has to do, I happen to notice the timbercut permits on here and there's a lot of that going on in town based upon the windstorm and the downage of pine trees. Is there anybody that's overseeing that, making sure they have the proper timbercut permits?
Gulf Town Selectman.
Yeah, the timbercut permits are, it's a taxation process and they get approved by the selectmen, but you also have the state, the forester also goes and checks, because it gets, it's sent, gets sent to the state.
Yeah, but is there anybody doing any follow-up? I know they're doing some cutting on, on Gulf Town Back Road or Center Road where you're coming into town. I know they're doing some cutting up on Locust Hill and I noticed a couple trucks in my neighborhood. I was just wondering if anybody's doing the follow-up on those when they see them.
The reality is not, what usually happens is the application gets through, the selectmen generally don't have any real right to refuse it as long as it's within the scope of the ownership rights, it gets approved. And it's when the report of timbercut gets submitted, usually that the state follows up on it. So as far as any sort of check while it's going on, the state really isn't involved with the process until the report is filed. So if you're saying is anybody going out there to make sure they're cutting within the boundaries absent some restriction or specific...
Are they paying the proper, are they reporting the timbercut for tax purposes?
That goes to the state and if they check it afterwards and find that there's an error, it comes up, but it doesn't, I'd have to say it's pretty fail, pretty rare that anything comes back, that there's any follow-up that indicates anything different. It's pretty rare.
There's also a time, a time limit for when they fill out and submit the application that it has to be approved, because if it's not approved within that timeline, it's automatically approved, they can go ahead and start cutting.
These timbercut permits, we are notified when they are in an approved subdivision area, is that correct? So we can avoid the problem we had with the Worthley Hill project?
No. Well, by asking the copies, that's flag, and they know, we're all in the same room and they know the issue, so they themselves know.
So the planning office would notify us if one of these timbercut permits was in an approved subdivision that has not been brought to...
Yeah, yeah, none of these are.
Okay.
The only thing I can add to that is sometimes when they come and I've seen the timbercut, because they only require three signatures and a lot of times when you get three signatures, they're gone, so the other two might not see them. When I've seen them and they were in a subdivision that's, I know that's been in front of the board, I questioned that and had it checked by planning.
Good.
I do know the Joyal property, they'll probably be doing something, they've come in for like hazardous to have, they actually, their conservation is going to be walking on Tuesday with a logger to clean up, if you know on Long Shirley Hill Road is the trees that are down, that's on that property and they're gonna be cleaning some of that up, but they, they don't want to touch anything without the conservation seeing that they're cleaning up the haz, anything leaning, kind of like what Derek did. And Derek prefer, because there's no structures right there for, other than the house on the corner, to go out and look at it and if he needs to go out, he will too.
But you know, I noticed, happened to notice there's a lot of trees down across on the Y.
Gene Walker's property.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, you know, eventually they'll all have to be taken care of, maybe, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, but if someone goes in and cuts it, even if it's falling down, is the timber tax still on it?
No, absent a certain level of cutting for your ownership per acreage, you have a right to cut down trees on your property.
I understand that. Okay, I know that.
We all sign on that then. All right, then being 7:15, we'll get into our regular hearings, beginning with lot 9, lots 33, 7, 46, and 60, completeness review for closed 19 lot, open space subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I said this at the conceptual, but I've done work for the Cordis family in the past, so I probably not roll this project and I'm not sure I have a conflict, I'm just not, I think I have to disclose that.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so, but it doesn't hurt to keep it out in the open.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, so Patty, is this application complete?
Yes, the yield plan came in today that you have, they're showing 25 lots on it, so they meant the completeness, the, if the applicant's willing to waive the 65-day clock and the board needs to determine if there's a regional impact and waive the traffic study for acceptance purposes only.
Do we need to do the clock waiting as part of the acceptance or...
Because it's, it's being recommended to continue to a date uncertain to give everyone enough time, one of your new procedures, this is one that they feel needs to be a date uncertain to give everyone enough time for review.
This actually is the yield plan, the first two sheets.
It's what was passed out tonight.
The continuance, follow through the black.
Someone like to make a motion then?
Before we do that, we have a bunch of waivers here. Yeah, I guess if we're, if we're going to continue for date uncertain, it's contrary to our usual practice, but it might be useful to give the applicant limited time, five minutes to do a quick pressure course, so then we can take it and know what we're looking at, but I...
Before we vote on completeness or...
No, no, afterwards.
Okay.
So we don't just rush on, I request that we do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Particularly with the yield plan, because it's newly before us and then would be better prepared when it comes back. Is, is the only waiver that's required now is the traffic study?
For acceptance.
Steve reviewed it and that's the comments he had. Are you requesting any other waivers?
I don't believe so.
Am I on the wrong page then?
Yeah, the, the order of, is different from the packet we got to the packet that was on our table tonight.
We're supposed to look at the new packet.
Yeah, well, it's distributed as the new.
Page four on the one that was on the table tonight.
33, 7, 46, and 60, yeah, well, I just, in our mail-out packet, there's an application for all kinds of waivers.
No, page eight, that was the mail-out package. From the application itself?
From the application itself. There's four waivers here.
Hey, Jake, that would be on the next.
He's talking about the application, maybe I'll see what they submitted.
Post-it speed reduction, minimum horizontal curvature, minimum lane width, cul-de-sac length.
Or you can do a waiver of those for acceptance purposes only.
There were five waivers asked for. Actually, seven. On the initial application, is this what you're referring to, Tim?
Yeah, it's in our packet. So we're gonna waive these for acceptance purposes only, I assume.
Mr. Chairman, that was our intention, get it accepted, then start working with staff and the other departments to see how those waivers shake out before the board actually would take the action on them.
Okay.
Okay. So for waiver for acceptance purposes, but not as to the merits?
Correct.
That this waiver checklist be considered as a, for acceptance purposes only?
Yeah, we'll waive for acceptance purposes only. You want me to make a motion? Don't have way there, or you gotta make a motion?
Okay. I'll make a motion that in addition to the traffic waiver they've asked for, for the acceptance only, we also add the list of waivers that's in their application for development review packet, that those waivers also be included for acceptance purposes only.
And you define, because this doesn't have a regional impact, would you like to add that?
I don't know.
Like just throw it in the waivers and then?
I don't know, I think about Blackbrook Road's a pretty busy road these days and it feeds directly into Manchester, I mean, does it, did we get a, when they wanted to develop that land in Manchester that was down there, did we get an app, a request for a comment? About six or eight months ago? Wasn't there a subdivision in Manchester?
You mean up on the industrial park?
Somewhere down there, adjacent to that.
In the industrial park, we did get a, we did get a, a package.
Our industrial park, they, it was determined it was a regional impact.
But I mean, also the Manchester, the North Manchester, on Hackett Hill Road backs up to this, backs up to this road. And there's a couple pieces of that property hanging into Gulf Town, actually.
Yeah, I thought we, I don't know if it's...
And they did come, they did send us a package, because I have that somewheres in my file.
Well, this actually comes in the East Dunbarton Road.
I just think about traffic that funnels down Dunbarton Road, East Dunbarton Road into Manchester daily, it's, it's the, it's the big shortcut from...
In my view, when in doubt, notify them, because they don't have any greater rights other than to be notified.
Oh, it's actually Dunbarton, because that road goes up into Dunbarton, right? From there, up, short distance?
Yeah, but I think most of the traffic comes downstream, so. Greater impact in Manchester. If you want to find it as a regional impact, just notify Manchester.
Does it pose a problem?
No, no, just notice. Yeah, it's a close question, notify them, talk about it later.
And it would be re-noticed anyways, because if you continue to a specific date uncertain, we have to notify, so we can determine it regional impacting it with notification of the public hearing.
Okay, so to continue the motion, then I find that this subdivision does have a regional impact and I think we should notify Manchester of this. Keep going, Jim, with the rest of them?
You're gonna roll.
Also, request that the applicant's willingness to waive the 65-day clock and to accept this subdivision proposal for review and continue it for further consideration to a date uncertain with re-noticing by the applicant. So...
Although, you know, the continuance and re-noticing, that would be typically a second motion.
Yeah, let's...
Separate that out? Yeah, yeah, I would suggest we separate that.
Pull that out so we can, we can have the applicant make...
Okay, I'll withdraw item four.
All right.
I, I, amendment, the motion, so amended, I second.
All right, any further discussion?
What are we voting on now? On two and three?
One, two, and three, with two being a regional impact. And one having the additional waivers added.
You gonna have a additional question?
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were waiting for me.
Yeah, I thought you were pondering that.
No, 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 no.
All right, all right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining. Motion carried. All right, now, we want to, Jim, I ask for just like a really brief...
I'd request that the applicant make a five-minute presentation on both the overall plan and the yield plan, just to, so when we take it back, we'll have a better sense of what we're looking at, but not to deal with any engineering issues or any of the complexity, it's a, we're an overview.
Okay, would you do that?
Sure. My name is Eric Mitchell, I'm here to present the plan on behalf of Blackbriar. We've been in, I think, twice before the planning board on conceptials and yield plans. The yield plan that was passed out tonight is a upgrade of what you had seen when we had the conceptual or discussion meetings. Questions were raised at that point, to what level, you know, we show you what is a yield plan and what isn't. The lots you see are the same as what you'd seen before, but we've applied a road profile to the roadways, graded it out as a four to one with two to one across the wetlands, and that's just for your review to see whether or not the 25 lots that we had shown to you a few months ago and show you now are realistic as far as yield is concerned. The proposal that we have is for a 19-lot open space development, there is an existing house there, that is one of the 19 lots that we have. Those would be contained on a small part of the acreage of the site, that hasn't changed from what our discussion is, the percentages, and then I don't remember right off the top of my hand, but there's, off the top of my head, but there's 70, 80 acres, something like that at least, of open space out there. So the plans that you see now are just an engineered set of the open space aspect of it, the smaller lots, and the yield plan shows a little bit better detail of what could be built out there for us. Now, we did have one meeting after our last discussion with planning and we did cut out the, we had our lots going up adjacent to the property on the, I think to the east buffer, though we have now put that in there and left a 50-foot buffer in as a separation buffer between that and the properties to the, to the east. That was one difference, but that was a suggestion of planning, we're able to accommodate that.
Any questions, anyone?
There are people here who came to see this, we put a plan up on the easel, just so they'll have some idea of what we're talking about. Mr. Mitchell, I didn't mean to be so brief that he couldn't point to a plan.
How about the thumbtack, Eric?
Maybe they can hold it up here to show what they, whatever you want me to show. Based on the plan for what we had been here for, conceptual before, and we did have the Butters notified for then too, just to keep everybody abreast of what's going on, the acreage that we have here is still all the same open space, we have the same number of lots proposed, which is 19, the existing house is on Montalona right now, all this would be open space, it's something that can be offered to the town as in terms of conservation easement, and we do not plan to have a, any impact down on the Blackbrook or Blackbrook Road. The concept shows through network going out the Blackbrook Road, but this proposal is to stop with the cul-de-sac here and that's the limited development for the entire property.
Could you, can you flip to the page that shows, maybe there is a page that showed the entrance to Montalona Road, a little more detail?
This is the one that shows the entrance, the existing house is over here, this is at a high point on Montalona, we have site plans, site distance plans, which we did submit, when we had to walk with the conservation commission, we had the road going in through this area here, which is actually a small dam, we did put the road down below the dam and this is a ponded area that was left, and that was some suggestions from the conservation commission to look into that. We also have looked at in the concepts you had seen, that the road comes straight down in and just a long straight road, it seemed to make sense, so we have moved down here and we have limited wetland impact for the project that we're doing.
It's drainage from bottom to top, slopes?
This slopes from the road down to this wet area, then comes back up and peaks in here, and here, and then slopes down, gently down towards the back. We have a wetland in the back here, it's a wetland over here, so this is high ground that comes up, but towards the back, it starts to go back down again.
They did what I asked.
Did I make my five minutes?
What's the biggest fill and the, and the biggest cut on the, on the, supposed, the yield plan road?
I think the, looking at the scale on that, we, we were fairly quick in the way we did that, we have one wetland where there's a crossing and we have a fill that's, I think, in excess of 15 feet the way we drew it, which goes into a cut and that cut is around 10 feet. That can be massaged, because we're not at maximum grades on any of that, but this was our first go-through, just to put a template on it, to go down through it, and that part is workable. If we were to build this, we would look to have that lesser fill at that, the steepest fill where that wetland crossing is, and then also have a less cut going down, slope down towards Blackbrook.
We've heard rumors that the applicant has requested to waive the 65-day time limit. Could you, could you repeat that, is that, is that true, the applicant has?
Yes, we agree to waive the, or request that we waive the 65-day time limit.
I think we've already acted on that, but I want to make it retroactive.
We want to take the schedule, before I come to a point where we want to just go over the yield plan before we entertain consideration of the final plans? We have in the past...
I think that's, I think that's the appropriate first step.
So instead of putting this out to a point uncertain, do we want to take and, with notice for consideration of the yield plan only?
That would, if we did that, it would allow us then when we get to the merits to jump right in and not, and so just have a, even if, even if it doesn't appear to be a close question, we've, we've always looked, not always, typically looked at those enough to satisfy ourselves to the factors, which is feasibility, construction, all that stuff, I think that would be appropriate to do.
Looks like, could do that next meeting, if...
Are we gonna tonight or next, are we gonna schedule it to the next meeting?
No, it's just an acceptance hearing only.
That's right, yeah.
Hasn't been noted yet, and we're just seeing it for the first time.
And if, Mr. Chairman, if we do it that way, which sounds good, if we could continue the, the plan to the date certain, that we're gonna look at that, we can decide at that point if there's a date uncertain for the, for the balance of the plan, because we may have worked with, doing work with staff in the meantime anyway.
Okay, I would avoid re-noticing if we had that. It's a good time to do that.
So you don't think I have to re-notice, you want to do the yield plan?
No.
Public hearing.
Because we, because we want to continue it to a date certain.
Okay.
You have to tell us what that date is.
Well, you're, you could do the April eighth, you have.
We don't have time to notice it, though, no, no, we don't have to.
Are you noticing Manchester? Oh, no.
But that's for, they don't, that's not to do with the yield plan.
Well, but if we set the date for the, I mean, part of the reason you just did this, the applicant discussed setting the date for the final hearing, I mean, you could just do it at that time, but, because I'm just pointing out.
The notice was to the completeness of the application.
Right.
In the public hearing you'd be re-notified for, I just want. Because of the, your new procedure and your development regs that you, you did.
Why do we change things?
I don't know.
So we're stuck with re-noticing anyway?
I, I think so. Because it was, it was noticed as this, that the hearing tonight goes to the completeness of the application, and they would be re-notified at the public hearing. I could technically do it tomorrow, and it, it would make the eighth.
What do we have on for the eighth?
You have the Lally, and you're getting a time extension request for the Worley Hill Road subdivision.
It's pretty late at this point.
Can you consider like? That's time extension. Time to look at the plan a little bit and maybe pose a couple of questions that they want to have answered, or whatever.
The April twenty-second has, the, the last one, they still have not met the full application fees to be submitted, so that may get bumped to the tower co-location, so it just might be those three. I mean, you could do it to the twenty-second if you choose, or the May thirteenth.
They say April eighth, whatever date that is.
Yeah, that would be the next one.
Next meeting.
Is the applicant, is that okay with you?
It's fine for us, and I don't know if you need labels or not, we can print up sets of labels for you, bring them over.
I'd love it if you did.
Yeah, we can do that. Three sets?
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
Yes, we do.
Tonight.
So just notify for the yield plan only, and then?
Well, I think we want to continue that we notify the hearing.
Yes.
But, because, because once we've scheduled a, a hearing date, then we can continue it to another hearing date and don't have to re-notice.
That'd be awesome.
If we, if we notice it only for yield plan, then we'd have to re-notice.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be a different subject now.
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna move that we continue this for further consideration on April eighth.
Excuse me, before you finish making the motion, could I ask the applicant a question? You had talked about that the yield plan meeting might work because you might have had a chance to work through some other things and be ready to set a date for a final review. I don't know what those things are that you were thinking of, but does April eighth give you that time to work on those other issues or not? Because if we're trying to avoid re-noticing, and he's not going to get to anything else in the next two weeks, and we know we're going to have a re-noticing issue because it will be to a date uncertain.
Well, that is a good point, because we can't have him bringing stuff in that day.
Right.
Well, April eighth, as I understand it, we'll be looking at the yield plan that you have a copy of.
Right.
We will, I think, have a better, uh, idea of how much more time we need before we set up the public hearing. So if the public hearing needs to be set up in one month, or six weeks later, because we would have had discussions with public works and the planning staff, then we can just set it up then. We're not bringing any new information into you on the eighth, it's the yield plan that you.
I understand it, but it looks like we're trying to save a noticing by doing it on the eighth, and if we're not going to save the noticing by doing it on the eighth.
If you wait.
Why not wait to do it so that you're in a position to be in a better, I, I mean, I'm trying to deal with staff's concern in regards to doing the one noticing, that's all.
And the only difference is, is that the yield plan needs to be decided before we know how to deal with the actual number of lots that we have. So that's the first step, and the way this has been noticed, we can't talk about the yield plan until we notify the abudders even for the yield plan. So we're going to notify the abudders for the yield plan anyway.
And if you, if you notice the eighth, you can continue to a date, because you don't just notice for the yield plan, you notice for consideration of the.
For the public hearing.
For a public hearing, and you can continue that to a date further on, that it will allow them to do any questionable engineering.
I mean, I understand that, it's just that as a member of a public, you come, you get continued, you get continued again, and I don't know how many other issues Mr. Mitchell is talking about for his development, and I know that from meeting to meeting goes pretty quick, that's all.
I'm an optimist, and I don't think there are too many.
Okay.
All right.
April eighth, sorry, Jim. Thank you.
Yeah, you can do it tomorrow.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll continue with that, so we'll see it, if it's, we want to continue this, I move that we continue this to April eighth. But that the sole matter to be brought before us then will be the yield plan, with the intention of then either continuing it to another date certain or to a date uncertain, we'll make that decision at the next meeting.
If I may, I think it was decided perhaps to do the yield plan, that would be the purpose of the meeting, but also notice for the public hearing for the plan itself.
Well, correct.
Because we'd be in the same boat again.
Correct, I just want people to know that it's going to notice for a public hearing, but our intention is the matter that we're going to address, like, I thought the prime matter will be the yield plan, so we don't get distracted by other issues as we sometimes tend to.
But we need to notice both.
We notice both.
I'm just note, public hearing, and then you can continue it again.
Whatever it was.
Yeah. It's in there somewhere.
Make it work.
All right, so all in favor of that continuation to the eighth, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. See you on the eighth. Table throw things on, it's missing here. All right, next up, we have map six, lot twenty-six, completeness review for a proposed two-lot subdivision.
And then you have, I think Paula's here. I don't know who the surveyor is. There's a little bit of issues that Steve had noted on four.
There was a little, I was a little concerned, in the package I got at, at home, had two letters addressed for the same, for the same thing, and I.
One is the acceptance review, and one is the staff checklist.
They were different, they looked the same.
Okay. It has different information, I was just hoping.
So the one that you have out in front of you goes the, the acceptance, and then the checklist is behind it, so you see what's come in.
Okay.
Patty, what changes, if anything, are on the information in the packet tonight as compared to the mailed packet?
There is nothing for the acceptance, other than Conservation Commission, for, under the checklist, Conservation Commission did review the plans, and they have no issues or concerns with it, and is, the same as assessing has no concerns, Police Department has no concerns. That is the only difference, is added to the checklist, but otherwise, the acceptance is the same.
So the question's under number four, then, is that something that's going to affect acceptance, or is that when we hit to the, the hearing?
He wants your opinion, the subject to pending boundary agreements, it must be, there's a designation on there, but also when looking at the plan, he said, he's saying non-buildable lot boundary being scaled without the bearings and distances, which is typically something you have. And then, the non-buildable lot corners being without the pins, and that again is something you normally would have.
And I need to abstain from this vote, and technically I could step, should step down, but with the board's permission, I'll stay here with my crutches. I am on the board of the P L C, so I should not participate in this discussion.
So, so this is a subdivision of a, a house and lot, a, a big lot, and subdividing the house off with the remainder going to the P L C?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was trying to determine from the map, I didn't understand the map, now I do.
I can't find my sign now, um.
Big one?
Well, I mailed one to us, and it's, I'm also going to make dust. The areas that they're requesting the, the waivers are in the conservation land portion, for the scaled and, um, not having pins in the corners.
Yeah, some non, non-buildable lot corners being without the pins, and the subject to pending boundary agreements, I, I really, that must be somewhere on there, but he's, he's just picked up a few things when reviewing the plan.
Do we know, do you know where, where that is?
No, I don't know if it, the surveyor, or if you want to let Paula.
Yes, I'd like to know where the, you know, the subject, if that's being noted on a plan.
Oh, I'm Hank Anso, I'm the Land Surveyor.
Can we, can we have him address this on these?
Oh, boy. Many moons ago.
Paula, you received Steve's comments, right, and so you know what, the number four is what they're talking about?
Yeah.
Can you explain subject to pending boundary?
Are there any pins on that board behind you anywhere?
No. What are you looking for?
Pins.
Yeah, there's, there's a few extra ones up here.
I have some.
I'm not going anywhere. I think you guys, they have.
You can pin it right to that board, right there, right to the no was law drawn. See there, that's why I didn't want to.
The camera can't pick it up anyway, so.
Nice flashy pins.
Actually, the camera can see it now.
Well, I can't see it.
If I can answer any questions, I'll give my, give it my best. So, yeah, the, the questions I had were the three, um, points on the staff write-up on the boundaries, designated subject to pending boundary agreement. Guess we'd like to know what the, what they are.
Here, here, there, and there. I have been advised they've orally agreed to it, I don't think they've signed it yet, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, well, they were all happy, we beat it to death, they haven't signed it yet, and still must say subject to a pending boundary.
Well, by the time we approve it, will this be, will they be final, so you can have it as the actual?
It would have to be.
Yeah, it would have to be.
As far as I'm concerned, it has to be, otherwise I'll, I'll have to completely alter everything, start over again.
So they'll have their, okay, so it's solely for acceptance only, we're having that note added?
That's correct, that's what we're looking for today.
And then, the second then is the non-buildable lot boundary being scaled without bearings and distances, and our regs request to require bearings and distances.
I can address that if that will help you, Jim, we did a survey for Mrs. Robinson in eighty-five, and at some point in time she said, stop. And of course, that's twenty-five years ago. Well, we, when we addressed this, I was able to find the notes, calculations, and so forth, and find enough control to do this area. Now, I know within, let's say, a foot where these are, but that's not close enough, and I've got to say, I've got to qualify the plan in that respect. I have a copy of the plan we did then, but it's not certified, it's not certifiable. There is a, there is a reroute here, there probably is one here, because this is one of, uh, he said no, survey here, but I don't remember his name, but he said, in other words, this entire area's been surveyed. There is almost certainly, we found one here, and there's almost certainly one here, this is a problematic area, I mean, I'm not going to certify a bloody thing there, there's going to be some other boundary agreements, if that's a straightened out, but that's not Mrs. Robinson's problem. I can put bearings on there, my plan lets me off, my statement lets me off the hook, if that will help, but these distances will have to be scaled, I know better than that, but I can put a bearing on it, that'll make it easier.
I, I'm part of these boundaries, part of other subdivisions that we approved over the years?
Sure, yeah, this one is, this entire area is, was approved a long time ago, here's another one right here.
I would think there's got to be information on recorded plan.
Yeah, the, the plan numbers are noted here and here.
But, but we can't adopt that, it's, it's on his plan, because he's a, outfit.
In theory, I could put the bearing and distance, it's on that plan on here, but it's really, my, my statement will undo your reliance on it, because I can't, if I can't tie that all together in one mathematical figure, I, I just can't, I can't go that far.
I'd feel more comfortable if the, the, already the additional information that's out there is somehow noted on these plans.
Even with a note that.
Even with a caveat, that the, it is based upon a, a recorded plan, such and such at the registry of where these meets and bounds came from. It's typ, it's typical of the subdivision we approved on Page Hill Road, the three lots up there on the north side of Page Hill Road, that abuts my property, the two property lines didn't agree, two surveyors decided to disagree, and we, between the party owners, we decided that we do accept this. And we changed it to one, because there was a no man's land of three foot wide going up through the middle, that no one owned, or no one would admit to.
I think one of the considerations in dealing with Mrs. Robinson and the, and the P L C, it's a nonprofit organization, and I told them that the expense of starting over again twenty-five years ago is, is going to be very high. And so, basically, we put ourselves here trying to use the fact, I did find this, I did find this, I did find a corner of stone wall. And I, there are plans which are referenced on my plan, which agree with this, and try to go no further and run up a bill for very little value to them.
But in the end, can we approve something like that?
Well, we can waive it, um, because it's in the subdivision regs, and the question is, I, I have two concerns, one is, no, it's concerned about setting a precedent, but where this is the non-buildable portion, I'm, I'm less concerned. And, and the second is, we want the plan to show as much information as you can reasonably put on it and still sign the plan, even if it's noted that it's not based on your work, because it still is information.
I'm quite willing to augment this statement, something that you people are happy with, just give me the language, and as long as I can live with it, it will go on.
You're the one who gives the courses on this.
Like what?
You're the one who gives the courses on this. But I, you know, if we could have the, the courses added.
Yeah.
That would be, it's useful information, and it helps.
Just put them on.
I don't know what the rest of you.
That isn't a problem at all.
And I think the abudders might be, feel better about it if it reflected something that they're familiar with too.
Sure. And then with a, and then the, the note will indicate, I guess we'd like to tie it in that the note, um, I guess you do, and, and note number one says it's for, um, conservation purposes, there's something on the face, and maybe that's implied by just giving it to P L C.
Why can't they, can't you give us some language, what the status of this land is going to be after you get, acquire it?
Yeah, and then, then it would have an explanation really on the plan of why we relaxed our standards.
I mean, I'm pretty comfortable, as long as we clearly identify it as a non-buildable lot, you know, from the future, one of the abutting property owners wants to come in and do something, then the, the burden would be upon them to establish a survey plan that'll close.
But the plan will tell a story, if clearance, if I looks at it, why, why we did that.
If it's going to be owned by the conservancy, do we ever hear anything about what their intended use of, even though it's non-buildable, how it fits into some kind of open space plan or conservation plan for the community? Does that ever come into play, or public access, or any of those issues ever come to play on any of these things?
I mean, that'll be written into the easement, the do's and the don'ts.
Paula Bellmore from the Piscatacuglue Land Conservancy. There won't be an easement on the property. The property is being donated in fee to PLC. And the property owner wants us to evaluate it and determine what future uses will be. There could possibly be some recreational uses, but primarily conservation.
What if we, we had a condition that any further subdivision of that land would require additional survey or something that affects, so that?
We, I think later on, one of the other questions that was going to be addressed was how we were going to guarantee this was a non-buildable lot. And we can put a deed restriction on it, and that would, that would solve that problem as well.
Excuse me, I think there was a request in your letter that something be recordable document to that effect. You already, I think you've got it, it may take me a while to find it, but I thought I read that. So this we're expecting some kind of statement from them that's recordable that I would think.
The deed in to PLC will restrict it to further subdivision to benefit abutting property owners which include the town, so that it would be enforceable by the town.
Thank you. All right, so we good on that then? Is there anything else we need to discuss for acceptance?
You got to waive, just for acceptance purposes, the site's topography.
Uh, could I address that? This will require subdivision approval from the state for the septic system and all that. And a separate plan is going to be prepared, probably by the TODD people, they're long colleagues of mine. And the well radius, I mean, this has town water, the best I know, but Mrs. Robinson told me, I never questioned it further. But any of those features could be shown on that plan because this is pretty well densified now. And pretty much, I think you can specify what they'd like to see on that, and put that on that other plan, which will be submitted to you at the same time, and hopefully cover all these things that you're concerned about. We'd have to show topography.
Would that plan be recorded too?
What he submits to the state? No.
The one, no, the one that Stamsen just described, is that, is that for the, that's for the residential portion?
Yeah, it would be just for, in other words, they have to dig a test pit to make sure that there's enough room in case the septic system fails and so on. And that's being handled strictly by TODD. I don't know why that can't be recorded, if you want it, but you will definitely get a copy. Whether you record it or not, it's up to you.
Same, same theory, that we want to provide us, it's an opportunity to create information and have it preserved.
But if you talk about a waiver of topography, you could accept the town GIS being superimposed on this plan too. It would give you the general feel for.
Well, we could waive it for acceptance, and then when we see that other plan, we can decide in the best way procedurally to get that part of the record.
What I'm trying to avoid is putting anything more on this. This is pretty dense as it is now. And no reason why you can't have it, but try to keep it off this one if you can, that's all.
Is that okay, if we do it on that basis, and then it comes to force, we'll figure it out, then it gets to Mr. Stamsen.
I don't have any problem with it.
And you need to determine if there's a regional impact.
Sam, there isn't.
I'm fine.
Chad, I'll make a motion then, that one, we waive for acceptance only, showing the site's topography. Understanding we may bring it back with a solution. Two, that we find that this subdivision proposal does not have a regional impact. Three, that we waive for the purposes of acceptancy items four, A, B, and C. Understanding that Stamsen will address our comments on a revised plan. And four, that we, I don't know if I said this already, I accept it for review and continue it for the hearing on April twenty-second.
Can you, would you consider a fifth one? The town has some drainage structures on that property at this point, don't they?
Yeah.
When they rebuilt their bridge, they put some outfall drainage that goes onto the property?
Yeah, I was, we definitely were going to have some comments on this, but hearing, I guess I'm a little confused about this other plan that's coming. Is that, like, if I make comments, are they going to be about this plan, or you're talking about some other plan that's coming that'll have more detail? Because we were concerned about, like, the existing drainages and shown probably, there's a treatment swale and an easement that we have actually right near the bridge. So that all needs to be shown, but is it on this plan, or is there another plan that we're getting before this is all?
If there's an easement down near the bridge, I would like to know about it because I didn't pick it up on the record.
Yeah, that was done a couple of years ago by Barbara.
What is the easement? Because I did not pick it up.
It's a drainage easement, so I'll have to look and see.
Okay, all right, all right. That, I'm glad, I didn't know about it.
Yeah, it's a drainage, um, for the treatment swale, so.
Well, I was puzzled because the, there is a structure on private land here, but there was no, there was no conveyance, no taking or anything that I know of. So I just showed that it's there. Why it's there is not my business, but.
So is that, is it, what is the other plan that we'll be getting, and is that?
No, that's not, that's not going to reach down here at all. That's nothing to do with, that's my problem, okay?
So just make all my comments, and you guys can figure out which plan is going.
I'm glad she brought it up because this is my problem, not the second one.
You guys figure out where, I'll just make my comments and determine which one is going to apply to this plan.
Yeah, we haven't waived any of the substantive comments. I guess that ends my motion.
Well, I was wondering what that stone structure was down there, and there's nothing on the record, apparently is in the record. Okay.
Okay, so, so we've only got the four, or we staying the fifth? I forget where now.
Well, it just means that there are some documents out there with easements that need to be added to the plan.
Very good.
That could be your fifth item.
Fifth item.
Okay.
Okay, so the fifth item is to add.
Well, we're going to request them to address any easements and stuff, which is going to do.
Okay, so that's just more information for him rather than.
We haven't waived that for purposes of acceptance.
I don't expect you to waive that. That's my problem.
All right, so were you seconding that then now?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
All right. So Barbara's stepping down. Steve, you want to cover for her? All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, staying.
Last one question, I don't even need to yield a nod. You're concerned about having granite bounds at all the angle points along the right-of-way. That's what the regulations say. Well, when I was there in eighty-five, there was a wall runs along here which is now covered up. Well, I knew where that wall was, so I show it on my plan, whether you can see it or not. I would like to know, or for example, this will have to be a granite bound. This is your, what you want, right? Okay, no problem with that. Can I put anything else at these angle points? Because they're miserable to get in, that's all.
I don't, I think we can waive them along the, along the continuous line.
If I'd known this, I'd put one straight line, try to live with it, but I know there's angle points.
The chances are that the right-of-way goes in and out, and round and round out down that road. And you might want to try to straighten it out in terms of title, while you have the chance, and make them do the property bounds that faces Henry Bridge Road, you know, to straighten out all these issues if there are any.
But that's a pretty squiggly line that used to follow a wall.
What about the other side of the road, you know? The other side of the road is just in the same worst condition.
I have to follow the road. That's my job. I find the road, the wall, I have to follow it. I can't straighten it out. But I could, I could put more angle points if I wanted, but I'm just asking, can I monument what I've shown in between with a rerod down flush?
I see.
Out of sight.
And just have it granite on the corner?
Right.
Instead of putting granite bounds, which I hate to put in, and I can charge them for it too. I have no desire to.
I see, because they are, they are corners along the road.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm going to amend my motion if we may to permit that the interior angles along the road be monumented. Don't require granite bounds to monument.
I haven't heard the vote yet. I won't write it down until you say, but that's.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Appreciate that.
I just think the old side of the road is very close to where things were rebuilt, probably, most likely. They're probably gone.
Yeah, the old wall.
The wall's gone.
This is next one. Get a look at it in there.
My freedom of speech.
Yep, yep, we'll see on the twenty-second.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah, that was part, that was part of the motion.
Continue to April twenty-second.
Well, this is the existing conditions.
Twenty-second.
We should go to the.
Yep, April twenty-second.
Site plan.
All right, next up, map seven lot eighty-two, final site plan review hearing for existing landscape business on Patty Hill Road. Conversations up in the hall, please.
Chair?
Yes, Tim.
I'm a neighbor to this property, although I am not a direct abutter, so if the board sees it, I should step down. I'm willing to, but I am not a direct abutter.
No.
No.
Hey.
Thanks for laying it out.
Okay, um, this is a proposed landscaping business and to construct a two thousand four hundred square foot barn for the landscaping business. The board, it came before the board on February twenty-fifth, where the board found it did not have a regional impact and accepted complete and ready for review. Since the plans have come in, Derek has reviewed the plans as well as Megan. And Derek gave a little background. They did receive a variance on January sixth for the use. And I believe it's setbacks, although he has, the buildings and the materials shall meet the twenty-five foot setback requirements. I can, do you want me to go through all his comments?
Do you have any history on the property at all?
I believe before it was a residence. I don't know if you want to, want them to explain?
Bob Kilmer from Duval Survey for Mr. Fornier. The property was subdivided in nineteen ninety. Mr. Fornier bought it in December of two thousand and three and moved in and began his irrigation and landscaping business on site. We're here for basically two things, site plan approval for existing conditions to bring us up to town specs and for a proposed building to be used as his screening. The zoning that Patty spoke about, there was a.
I just want to go back to a sentence. I want to know if I heard it right. Are you saying that this property owner has modified this site without a permit? With a permit, or under what circumstances?
No, that's why we are here. We're here to bring it up to specs because of, you know, problems, questions, and other thing, other things to bring it up.
He has his landscaping business there, and he went to ZBA for the landscaping use after the fact.
So the business was started without.
And now, and part of that, part of that approval was he come in for site plan review is what he's doing right now.
What he's doing right now, or what he's done so far on the site?
It's two, two, isn't it? What he's done so far, and then he wants to make an addition.
Yes, he wants to add the barn.
Be a new site planner.
Make improvements.
There's certain.
You get an after-the-fact site plan approval, and then an approval for additional improvements on the property.
I'm not interested in that at all.
Correct.
Yeah, January sixth, two thousand nine.
Mr. Chairman. Does he have a variance for the uses and the changes he's made to that site?
He has a variance for the use, and if, if, I can go through all of Derek's comments, who is also.
On January sixth, he got them.
Got what?
The variance.
A variance for the use and a area variance for the, for the buildings. And they were granted as contained on page fourteen of our packet tonight, which was in the packet, different page number in regards to it, in regards to what specifically was covered and discussed, but not included in the motion.
Okay, so that sounds like, like we do have that variance.
They have a variance for use, they have a variance to put the shed out back. But they, did they get a, any type of approval or variance to put the underground drainage in and to fill that site?
Um, that is not something that they, that's like a hearsay for, it has not been looked into in that way. That's conservation's going to be walking the site. Megan has her comments. If, I think if you let the applicant go for it, then Megan can explain.
Bring the site as it exists.
I don't think this board has the right to approve something that was done without a prior approval.
What do you, what do you have that you think was done without approval, approval that they, they didn't address with the ZBA on January sixth?
I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Well, if you don't have anything.
If you look at the drainage calculation plan submitted, that uses a town topography. If you know anything about plans and topography, you know that that site is, the entire back has been filled. Now, with just a couple of feet of fill, and a lot of fill.
I don't think you have standing to make that conclusion as a result of the receipt of the proposed documents, do you?
Sure, sure. Yeah, we can use our knowledge. Yeah, that's all, court said that. We can use our knowledge of the area.
So members of the board are going to submit testimony at a public hearing as to their personal knowledge of the site and the topography as it was how long ago?
Four years ago.
Yeah, we're entitled to bring our knowledge of the area.
I mean, just none of it was in the ZBA stuff that I looked at, so I didn't.
Members of the committee.
No, it wasn't. I looked too.
Okay.
Let me let him complete his presentation.
We went to the zoning board on January sixth, they got approval. The largest thing was the, again, we got the use variance to operate a landscaping business in addition to a primary residence. Also, got an area variance to locate structures and equipment associated with the business closer than one hundred feet to the side property lines, which is a, which was a requirement, zoning requirement of keeping a land, having a landscaping business in an agricultural zone. The issues that zoning board brought forward, their conditions, that additional screening of material and equipment be done. Require that all buildings and materials shall meet the twenty-five foot setback that they gave us relief from. The no increased fuel storage on a property, which is five hundred gallons at the time. And they require that they, a floor be added to the existing salt shed. Part of their approval was based on coming to the site plan to have the input and get appro, you know, get site plan approval along with that. We have an existing conditions plan and some of the things that they had issue with were the fuel station being within the twenty-five foot setback. Salt shed again was also in a twenty-five foot setback, so we, they have to be moved out of the, to meet the twenty-five foot setback. And you can see on that, next page is a proposed site plan showing us moving the salt shed to come in to meet the twenty-five foot setback. Moving the materials and the stone storage to meet the twenty-five foot setback. Moving the fuel station from south of the pad, on the north end of the pad, to meet the twenty-five foot setback. Propose a forty by sixty building with a twenty by sixty cover to the south side as a part of the screening that is required. We had our technical review on March fourth, Megan, Steve Griffin, and representative of the fire department. Megan, Steve Griffin, and Representative of the Fire Department. Met. And the fire department was concerned with the materials and everything else. They made us, required us to keep a thirty feet from existing structures, so we had to slide.
What's the everything else?
Building.
You said everything else, what everything else?
Pardon?
You said the fire department was concerned about.
With, with what was going to be stored, where things were going to be stored as far as combustibles.
So, on page sixteen, proposed barn moved five feet to meet fire department's requirement of thirty foot separation and they wanted details about fuel storage?
Correct.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. He's also waiting for a, read the comments on page sixteen from the fire department. Their, Mr. Fornier has to produce a, details for his storage tank to make sure that meets their requirements and their standards. Page sheets three of three is a rudimentary screening plan showing, you know, what his building will look like, it's kind of a as far as screening and that such, and we're, uh.
Do you want to explain how the, the property up above is higher, so far as the trees?
Property to the north sits quite a ways above the property, approximately from his, uh, flat area. In here is approximately five hundred and thirty feet of elevation and the house is approximately five hundred fifty-four. So there's a an issue with, you know, we're here to see about the screening and how we're going to deal with the elevations, the elevation difference and to meet the screening standards.
During the technical review, they requested additional trees be planted, I believe you're proposing nine more trees?
We're proposing more trees. Again, we're proposing a fifty foot wetland setback. When the property was subdivided in nineteen ninety, there, there was no, there is no wetland setback required of the lot. We're proposing with the conservation commission a fifty foot setback and we're proposing additional screening along that setback to block more. You can see proposed additional screening on your plans to the west side of his gravel area.
Um.
Megan's review was a, uh, plan, drainage plan, which shows a proposed drain pipe running from the north property towards the south, outletting, which is to pick up drainage entering from property to the north. Also showed proposed barn and on it, where the infiltration trench around it with a proposed dry well, catch the property and then it would reach out. And then the, the last plan would be a move, proposing to move the existing driveway approximately forty feet to the south, so that we could meet the town's two hundred foot site distance requirement with some grading to meet that.
You done then?
Any questions?
Are there any, uh, wetlands to the north or the south of these property lines?
There are wetlands extending on the north side that you can see the matchup on where we tied, where we've done our mapping on our property, here and here, the pass through.
Yeah.
Here and here.
How about towards the front, under the parking lot where the pipe is?
Up in here?
Yeah.
Um.
To the north and to the south?
Again, it was never, there is some pining, you know, wet areas on Mr. Gibson's parcel.
Is that what that pipe connects that goes down through there?
I don't think there are any, the wetlands is right here.
Pardon?
Is that what?
The proposed, the proposed pipe?
No, the one that's shown on the plan now, is it, is there one there proposed now, or is it just a? What's this underground electric?
It says proposed culvert.
Yeah, proposed culvert.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Which is a, part of the Department of Public Works comments we got today, where there's an existing six inch underground along the length of the property on the shoulder of the road, that again would be out of Patty Hill Road.
Might be interesting to see where the wetlands are north and south of that property. I, I'm seriously concerned about the fact that it's filled and they filled the wetlands.
Well, in the area that shows is this flat area that you're saying was filled, at the time of the subdivision in nineteen ninety, there, on approved subdivision plan, there were high intensity soil mapping done. The only soil mapping on this parcel that was wet, we're act, we're showing, and it's on the, basically the westerly part of the property, there was nothing between Patty Hill Road and actually the, this wetland in the middle.
The drainage calculation plans didn't have a plan showing wetlands on the north side of the site?
You mean from the previous subdivision?
No, the one that was submitted, the drainage calculations.
I believe it. I don't have the drainage calculations either.
Yeah, I think she's looking. This piece here you're talking about?
Yeah, Megan. Whereabouts on the site plan is the drainage? The dry well is closely located?
Right.
Small, smart, small circle here, you should probably see it on your proposed site plan. Not labeled.
The, the unfilled circle. Just the circle of the block.
Yes, right, the unfilled circle.
Did you dig a test pit there to characterize the soils?
Haven't done that, I will check with Mr. Rook, the engineer, see if that's, I not sure that it's in the package, if there were any soils in the package for his drainage calculations or.
Because I think digging a test pit there would, this is my, serve two purposes, determine whether or not the soils are appropriate for infiltration and also get to Alan's concerns to whether or not those are filled wetlands under, under that gravel area.
So where, you want, where, would you like the test pit?
Where they're going to do the infiltration.
Yeah, the proposed dry well.
That's on my comments pad.
Okay.
So Megan, did you find something about what Alan was asking then?
Oh, he was just, I raised my hand when he was asking about the drainage pipes, there's two existing like six inch drainage pipes in there now, and that's going to replace those with one larger twelve inch pipe, and based on the drainage study review, I would recommend to up that to a fifteen, um, because for the twenty five year storm, it was right above capacity, so I had, um, decided to bring that to a fifteen, I also recommended, don't know if I.
The test pit?
Yeah, I recommended the test pit, but I can't remember if I got this in my notes or not, um, I, I was looking at making that a perforated pipe instead of a solid pipe to help during lower storms of leaching in. Their impervious area for the barn in the, um, potential like overhang storage area is all going to go into like a leaching six inch drain pipe and then catch basin storage, and I did some quick counts on that, and that seems to be sized appropriately, but I had requested a test pit to make sure, um, these lines are too close to that and whatnot. But I thought the other bigger pipe that crosses the main property that pretty much takes water from the north side.
Property to the north, yeah.
Um, to see, on the north side, there's a driveway that has two culverts, and so one of the culvert drains for this property and this new pipe would pick up the water and then pass it to the other side.
And in the drainage analysis, did they consider all of the gravel areas impervious?
All gravel areas impervious, um.
Well, if not, they should. And I guess I actually can't, I have a question, um, I'm trying to get clear in my mind this whole screening issue, so what we're trying to accomplish is we're trying to screen the activities that occur in that gravel area from the McClary residence, is that what we're trying to do?
Right, again, a site plan review is, you know, required of the screening area.
I understand, but I just want to make sure I got it straight in my mind, so, so that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to screen the activities that are going on in the gravel from the McClary residence, you're going to accomplish that by building a barn that provides part of the screening and then supplementing it with evergreen plantings around the side to complete the screening.
Correct, and there's a large amount of them that already exist.
That's interesting.
A lot of what, what of them, what's the antecedent of the?
There are trees.
I'm sorry, Jim?
What's the antecedent of the third person pronoun them?
Oh, come on, it, he was talking about that there are trees there now.
I know, that's what I was asking, what was it?
There are trees and they're adding more landscape.
Carlos didn't understand my question, trees, okay.
Got your dicks carried out, all right. Jim?
I couldn't, I just didn't watch you, I missed, I missed what he was referring to, trees of buildings, trees.
It's eight thirty on Thursday night, I'm getting.
I just, I'm going to wake you up.
Okay, so I'm, I was just trying to make sure, so, so part of the screening is, is a building, I think that's kind of a unique way to go about screening, but hey, is that consistent with screening requirements in our site plan?
Look that up.
I believe he's got to keep his equipment, right?
Right.
In the building.
It's, it's either screen it or cover it.
I, I understand.
In the site plan, and that's why basically the proposed barn and storage off to the side would accomplish is getting his equipment in one spot undercover, so it wouldn't be seen.
One thing noted from Derek is the concrete pad with a fuel station, that has to meet the twenty five foot property setback as well, because it's.
I was honest, because of.
Yeah, it's in what was given today.
Today, okay, because.
Today, what he reviewed.
TRC, it was, it's, he said that the.
Derek's.
Oh, okay, it says.
Determined that it would be a structure.
It does not meet the twenty five foot property setback, okay.
Yeah.
The information, after the TRC, we asked him specifically, and I thought it was that it didn't fall into the, the building, it wasn't, you know, it didn't meet the twenty five, not didn't meet the twenty five foot setback, but it didn't matter that it did not, because it was a concrete pad and not a structure, that's the understanding I had, but.
We can get clarification from Derek, but that's what he pointed out to me, that it didn't meet and he put it on.
It doesn't meet.
Okay. The purpose of the concrete pad is that's where the vehicles will position themselves while they're refueling?
While they're refueling, yes.
And are there provisions for spill cleanup and those sorts of things?
He has a, just, what he has is the pad and the fuel station, which is enclosed, has the, there's a tank inside a cement.
I understand the tank has containment around it, I'm talking about the pad where the vehicles are, where they're being fueled, is there provisions for cleanup for spills?
Um, the spill kit. I, I, I had called DES and asked them what, what I needed to do. And that was the rules that I got.
Can't go on with them.
We're employee parking.
Pardon?
Okay, right here.
Employee parking is out towards the house.
Is that screened?
It's, there is some existing vegetation there. I'm not sure about how well the screening is. That can be looked at also, you know, anything from there.
How many employees does he have?
Pardon?
How many employees, how many cars are parked there?
Believe it was six.
And Megan, did you look at the drainage analysis for how they deal with a runoff from the employee parking in those areas down in that area, that section of the property?
The drainage study only looked at the drainage area that, um, went to the pipe so they could size the pipe properly, that was all it was, it went to that area, um, so it didn't look at the other area, we can have them do that, this was just to size the culvert cut.
Um, I, I also want to add, this did go to conservation last night, and they're not, they're going to make their comments after they site walk the property, which won't be until April seventeenth. And so at the April twenty eighth meeting is when they would be, um, issuing their comments.
Any other questions from the board? All right, we have, the butters or members of the public would like to comment on this, sir.
My name is Don McLeary, I'm the butter in the north. Um, I guess I have some, some concerns that I'd like to address, I guess more questions after seeing the, I guess the first question is how did all these buildings, salt shed, gas station, the whole thing, there's no permits for any of this, is that correct?
None of the buildings that were built.
Well, that's, correct, that's part of that, that's why we're here to bring him up.
For five years, this has gone unattended, with Mr. Horn knowing damn well what was going on. There's no permits for anything, and now we're going to try to address it and try to fix it, is that the idea?
Sounds like that's where we're at, yes.
Okay, as far as the screening goes, uh, my house is some fifty feet above that pit that Mr. Fornier has built in the backyard. I figured it'd be about eighty seven years old by the time those trees are high enough to screen the thing. Those are six foot trees that he built. The salt shed sits right on top of a drain, a, a natural runoff, that's why the drain pipe was put in underneath that parking lot. I think if anybody walks that property, you're going to see that there's wetlands that have been covered, and there's wetlands throughout that whole lower section, the middle section. I'd like to know what the rules are for storage of bark mulch, hydroseed, and the size of the barn, I'm just curious how all the equipment that he has is going to fit inside that barn, and what about the edge of the driveway, which is some nine hundred feet, how is that going to be screened? And I guess the other thing is, this is not even a landscaping company, it's a, um, it's a snow removal and plowing company. That means for all hours of the night, there's loaders, backhoes, trucks, lights on two, three, four o'clock in the morning. I'd like to know how that was going to be addressed, hours of operation. I guess those are my only concerns right now. I just want to make sure that this whole operation is supposed to be enclosed, all trucks, all vehicles, all materials, going to bond that side. It'll find it hard to read.
Okay, thank you. What else? Sir?
Kevin Gibson, one six three six, Patty Hill Road. You know, six years this has been going on, um, there's, there's somewhere, you know, sixteen feet of fill on the left hand side of this property brought in, the elevation at the backside of this property is probably close to sixteen feet difference in elevation from what it was. You know, initially when Brian bought this property, he started, you didn't used to be able to pass on the left hand side of the barn, it was probably a twenty five, twenty foot fill on the left hand side of the barn, so he could pass to, to access the backyard. And then he continued to bring in thousands and thousands of yards of fill, the center of this, right in front of where the salt shed sits now, used to be a directional flow of water coming from the downhill side of the property. He took that directional flow, put it inside of a culvert, ran it across underneath all this fill, and it now discharges over next to my property. You know, I would argue that what he has filled in the center of that is probably wetlands, and I actually this morning hired Rick Vanderpool to, to try to to prove that fact. The wetlands, in my opinion, haven't been completely flagged, that whole sliver on my side where his fill stops is wet from one end to the other. I mean, it's not just a little bit wet, it's, it's all mush. It shows where all the runoff used to come down through there. You know, I was out there with Megan today. You know, Megan took, you know, quite a few pictures of what's going on over there. She actually has a map that shows the original topography in there, showing from the center of his parking lot now to what it was, the sixteen feet difference in elevation. So, you know, this whole thing was all done, you know, it wasn't, you know, he didn't come to any of the regulatory boards to say, can I do this or can't I do this? He just did it. So now, you know, do we, do we reward that? You know, you know, I bought the property downhill from this, you know, knowing full well this property was a hundred eighty feet wide. How much could they do up there? Okay, so now he's got a use permit that says he can be twenty-five feet from the property line. You know, you know, where does it stop?
Can you state your name again?
Excuse me?
Can you state your name again?
Dean Gibson.
Dean Gibson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you know, back to what John was saying, you know, snow comes in, you know, and trucks at night, trucks go out with salt at night. You know, the salt is, it's not just Brian's trucks, it's other people's trucks getting the salt. You know, for years, the residual waste from rebuilding septic systems was dumped over the backside of this property. You know, up until a year ago, his own testimony, last night at the ConCon meeting, he was dumping all of his grass clippings over the bank, which is a huge nitrate issue. You know, I'm downhill from him. I have all kinds of wetlands immediately on the other side of the stone walls of this property that I'd be happy to pay to flag. So, and I'd love for this board to actually site walk this thing. You know, you, you just, it's hard to believe unless you stand on my property and look back at this thing and say, how did this happen? How did six years of this, thousands and thousands of yards of fill go uninvaded? It's just, no, that's, I don't know what else to say.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Like, if I could, my name is Tim Bobb. I'm attorney for Mr. Fornier. And I'm part of the zoning process. If I could just say a few things to rebut, Mr. Gibson and Mr. McClary. And one thing I do want to say is there's, there's obviously, there were some issues prior, which is why Mr. Fornier went to zoning. He is now approved to operate his business on the property. This is the agricultural district. So, I mean, use is really not an issue. He has a variance. The question is just how we get from here to getting the property in compliance? And more importantly, making sure that there is, you know, that we can fix the property and get it operational. What I'm saying is there's a current culvert willing to put in a bigger culvert. Sixteen inches is no problem. The barn fits, it's going to fit with the agricultural feel of the area. So I think it's a, it's an appropriate way to screen. Understand that the current, the current trees that are out there may not be enough to screen, which is why we're here and which is why the zoning board requested that there be additional screening. And that's what we're here to, to work out. And one of the issues is, Mr. McClary is at a significantly higher elevation. It's very, going to be very difficult to fully screen everything. I think if you look at the most current plan, Mr. Fornier's done a, a good job of doing that, of getting everything either behind the trees, behind the barn, or, or into the building. I would also say that, and I think that a site walk, I would expect that the board may do a site walk and that would be absolutely fine. ConCon will be out there anyway and be happy to have you, so, thank you.
I just wonder, wouldn't it have been a better idea had he gone through the process and we'd have, be able to talk about this all instead of jamming it down our throats? And now we're going to try to figure it out? It makes no sense to me at all.
Well, yeah, it would have been.
That's why we have a zoning board, that's why we have a planning board. Has anybody ever built anything in this town? You can't build a patio deck without a building person. You go nowhere. Cease and desist. That's the way it works, for a reason. So we don't get here.
You know, I don't, I don't think it's the burden of the board to have to make this screening issue, you know, easier for anybody. Had he come here to begin with before he placed his business there, he would have been told, you have to screen the neighbors' properties to this. That's why we have the regulations so you can have this operation there and the neighbors don't have to look at it. How this ever got, you know, past simplex that it doesn't affect especially John's property value is beyond me. But is the board supposed to make it easier because he didn't come here? Had he come here to begin with, he would have said, you know what, I can't screen this to his house. Maybe I shouldn't buy this house and move my business there. You know, because he, he can't screen this business to, to the uphill side. You know, and how do we address the runoff around the salt shed that's going to end up in the wetlands? And the fuel tank, you know, my, I have a surface water wall that's two hundred feet, you know, below this, you know, directly below this. You know, a fuel station's only as safe as the worst employee. You know, once the damage is done now, you know, the salt runoff, you know, does he have to create some kind of containment on the property? And I would argue that had he not filled this, had he come to the board and they would have seen the wetlands in the middle of this field where his salt shed sits right in front of it beforehand, that he wouldn't have had enough room to operate this business. If he would have showed that wetland and the board would have said, you're not filling the one. Because I called the state today and said, would he have had the right to fill this wetland? The state said, we would never give permit to operate any kind of construction company to fill this wetland. We would give him a permit to cross it, to reach higher ground, but we would never give him the permit to put sixteen feet of fill on a wetland, period. So if he couldn't have filled it, there wouldn't be enough room to run the business. Because if you cut that parking lot by forty percent or fifty percent all the way to the salt shed, and then you make a fifty-foot setback to there, how much yardage is left in the back? Not enough to run his business, not enough for bark mulch, not enough for salt sheds, not enough for fuel storage, not enough for trucks, loaders, everything. It's not enough there. So instead of getting permitted, he just did what he wanted to do because he probably knew it wouldn't work otherwise. So now he's here after the fact saying, okay, you know, now what do we do? So it's, I don't think it should be on the burden of the board to make it any easier on him. If he can't screen the business to McClary's house, he shouldn't be able to operate. You know, that was one of the things the CBA said. You have to screen that business to his house. How you accomplish that, we don't know.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we know, we know that conservation is going to be doing the site walk. It's not really much we can do until after that. Unless anybody's got any further questions? If you're looking to continue this.
Does anybody know what day the conservation is trying to do the site walk?
They are doing it on the seventeenth.
At eight AM.
Saturday morning?
Does anyone?
I may not be able to do it.
I was going to say, by the way, I'll be on that site walk, so I'll be able to report back.
Could you have, could you shoot us an email on, on that time?
Yep.
Because I won't remember anything except tonight.
It's the seventeenth.
That's because we missed our eight-thirty break.
Yeah, yeah, he's getting too sleepy.
That's why you sat there. It's closer to the bathroom.
Okay, I'm going to move then that we, we continue this to May fourteenth. And to extend a site walk is considered a meeting that we, we continue it to the seventeenth for a site walk only and then a further hearing on May fourteenth.
A second there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, clarification, so are you continuing that the board's going to site walk too?
Well, yeah, there's some issue of whether if the board gets, yeah, there's a quorum, whether that's a public.
Yeah, it depends on how many. We need to continue it to that date for purposes of the site walk. And then continue it for further public hearing on May fourteenth.
All right, so we'll see you on the fourteenth for a site walk.
Okay, so I'll need to know who's attending because if, if there is a form, then I have to post it, the meeting.
Just post it anyways.
Just post, okay.
Point of the motion.
All right, okay.
They just continued it to then.
Yes.
Okay, so, so it's not like Barbara was waiting for the eight-thirty break before we do the.
No, well, I, I'm going to have to, I'm, my foot will have a time limit regardless of what you all do with breaks, so.
I'm going to ask the barber to take another Percocet before we start.
Why, they're going to help her vote?
If you've got one for Professor Raymond, that'd be a good thing, too.
Yeah, I think we need something stronger.
So, so is anyone on the board desperate for a break or do we just want to finish this off? How long is it going to take? Cover along, we let him. Just conceptual. All right, go ahead, Tony.
For the record, Tony Martz for the applicant, Konstantinos Krvanos. And with me is Deb Brewster from TF Marianne. Well, I think she's got some pictures that she's going to put up to show you what we're looking at. This is a conceptual plan discussion relative to the property of Sixth South, Sixth South Mass Street, which is the Greek revival building. It's a white building immediately abutting the Gulf Station, also known as the former Exxon Station on Mast Road. The Exxon, the Gulf Station at Mast Road and Mountain Road. This, this building is the one that's directly on Mast Road. It's a, currently a three-unit multifamily. All of the parking is on the Mast Road side. There's essentially a driveway across the entire front where they, they essentially park in front of the, the building. So it's, it's an extremely, as you can see, it's an extremely large lot. It goes all the way from Mast Road back to Knoll Crest. So it's essentially twice the size of either the abutting, any of the abutting properties. The plan here is to take the Dunkin' Donuts kiosk, which is inside of the Gulf Station, move it out into a freestanding building of about twenty-four hundred square feet. As you can see. Before we moved even to this point here, we met with staff, Steve and Derek. We met with Megan and Carl at DPW. We also went to the Historic District Commission. This is a, our, our building is in an RSBOD zone as opposed to the Gulf Station, which is still zoned commercial. Under the RSBOD district, in order to take down a building or change your principal use, the planning board needs to wait forty-five days for comments from the Historic District Commission. So we wanted to go there first to get their sense of the historic significance of this building and whether it was even worth considering knocking it down or, or changing the use. We had a very good meeting with them at their last meeting. They are concerned, well, let me first talk about the building itself. The building itself was built in like eighteen seventy-something. It really has, according to the existing material that the Historic District Commission has, the same kind of history that so many towns or so many of these buildings had. So-and-so was the selectman, so-and-so did this or that. But that was back when there were only that many people here in town. They've asked us to do a, get a historical architect to do an in-depth survey of this building before we take any action here. They've also asked us to ensure that when Teresa Golding, the existing owner, moves out, that we continue the tradition of having a carved giant pumpkin during our carved giant pumpkin season here in town. So that would be, of course, a condition of any site plan approval.
So that'd be in the middle of the Pocket Park.
No, you know, yeah, well, we've got, this is a, you know, this is a Anne Cruz from TF Marianne Little Pocket Park situation. She did the, the Abington Square landscaping as well. The key for us in terms of working with the Historic District Commission is, number one, we want to make sure that they're not disgruntled that we take the building down, but also that the building that we put up again is as much as possible consistent with the architecture there. It's kind of interesting because, you know, we kind of drive through town and we think of it as, I don't know, is it colonial, is it Victorian? Certainly Mo Bedard's house is a little more Victorian down the street on Wallace Road than most of them there. This is technically a kind of semi-Greek revival type of thing. And when we first looked at some designs, we looked at more of a colonial look. And the way that these Dunkin' Donuts are being built today, they tend to be white clapboard with pitched, you know, black asphalt roofs. It's none of the nineteen-sixties era stucco that you're used to seeing in so many older spots. The planning, or the Historic District Commission really asks that we not go colonial, that we try to stick to more of a Victorian Greek revival type of thing. And we're actually working with the architect to come up with that type of design. There's actually one that's near to that in Nashua. There's potentially another one in Manchester that's going to be along the same design. So we think we can, and I think you've got a, a letter from Steve Griffin before he left. And that's one of the things he suggests is that higher pitch type of situation. That's the, kind of the Historic District kind of issues here. We also met with the Main, the Main Street Program last week because we want their architectural input as well. But the key thing for this site in terms of its ultimate development in this kind of format is our ability, hopefully, to address some of the traffic issues or problems that are currently affecting this area of Mast Road, especially as it relates to the fact that the Gulf Station is a very crowded kind of site. The fact that the Dunkin' Donuts there today really draws more traffic that is difficult to deal with. As you can see from Deb's plan, and this is like the eighth iteration of the plan, we have separated our drive-through lane from our parking areas. We've used the entire site in order to maximize the queuing availability on the site. There in fact are twenty-four, there's a twenty-four vehicle queuing lane available at this site, which is well in excess of what it would be either under our regulations and also well in excess by some twenty-five percent, I think, of what you would normally see at, at a Dunkin' Donuts store. That's why this site is critically important in terms of where it sits and our ability to make use of that. It does have today significant grading problems in terms of the, the grade from Mast Road to less than halfway into the building that's existing there drops some, you know, twelve feet or so. And the site is going to have to be raised in order to deal with that so that that level grading will go to the end of the new building and then gently slope down through the parking lot and, and the queuing. Deb and Anne, as you can see, are proposing significant landscaping, not only around the perimeter of the site, but also in the front of the building, there is a seasonal outdoor seating area. And there is a significant berm type of landscaping in the front. Our goal here is to continue the sidewalk that we're proposing on our site all the way across the Gulf Station site, connecting it to the sidewalks on the other side of Mountain Road. Do we have a picture, a picture of the roundabout?
It's in the back.
Yeah, the Pleasant Street Roundabout is really, ends at the other side of Mountain Road. And we know that it's at least, it's at least Carl's intention to continue the sidewalk scheme that we see in the Lower Village with the concrete and the granite curbing and the, the brick, excuse me?
Highlight.
Highlight, the brick highlight, yeah. That's all I can think of is highlighting now. But so that our sense would be that we have an ability to really kind of tie in the Lower Village and this particular site, and certainly in a more cohesive way than it is today. The interesting thing is, if you look at the canopy at the, you can see it actually on this plan as well, the canopy at the Gulf Station, it actually goes right up to the right-of-way from what we've been able to determine. So that when you're parked at the last pump at the Gulf Station, you're under the canopy. To the left of you facing. To the left of you facing south, there's an open drive lane today, where people either park and go into the convenience store, or they drive around, uh, whoever's at the pump. That area is apparently in the town's right-of-way. So that our sense is that we really have an ability in working with, uh, the Gulf Station to clean up their, uh, sidewalk area, and, and kinda take advantage of the fact that we really can better tie in, uh, the rest of our sidewalk and pedestrian area, potentially, uh, working to better define the curb cuts at the, at the Gulf Station as well. But those are issues that I know the DPW would be extremely interested in pursuing, and we would need both their input and the planning board's input in that respect, as well as certainly some kind of, uh, uh, cooperation from the Gulf Station owner. Gulf Station today is owned by Cumberland Farms, uh, out of Boston. We have no relationship with them other than being a tenant, uh, today in that store. This property, being in an RSBOD district, uh, also requires a variance from the zoning board. And we're looking, before we even apply to the zoning board, to get as much input from the planning board and again, the Historic District Commission. We met with the Economic Development Commission, uh, this past week as well. Steve has given us some things to consider. You have his letter. One of the things that Steve notes is, uh, he is suggesting a, uh, easement between the Gulf Station property and this site in order to potentially have internal access between those two sites. Which is something that, when I first looked at the site, it's one of the first things I considered. How much traffic can we really take off of Mast Road, so once you're there, uh, you're there. You can get gas, you can pull into a queuing lane, uh, at the drive-through, or otherwise pull into the parking lot. I have since heard, uh, not from any engineers yet, but certainly from some architectural people, that that might not be the greatest idea. And that's certainly something we would wanna explore with you folks. We can certainly give that easement. We may not be able to control the easement coming the other way from the Gulf Station until such time as they came into the board to do something else with their site. But, uh, that's certainly something that we would wanna show on our plan. Frankly, our client is not really that interested in that kind of approach because he also owns the store in Pennardville, and as we all know, there are historical issues there that I think have been there before any of us even showed up in town. Uh, and certainly before he owned the property. That property was built, I think even before Steve Kamen, uh, who owned a bunch of Dunkin' Donuts in the area years and years ago. So that's certainly something that is, is on our list. Steve also suggested, uh, that we provide some pedestrian access from Knoll Crest, uh, which is, if you see the plan, it's easy to do in a couple of different places. It would be a, kind of a, probably stairs, walking up a couple of stairs, but, uh, we would try to accommodate that, again, to add some pedestrian access, uh, as well. We are, as you see our plan in front of you, I think we're a couple parking spaces short of what we would normally require for a restaurant with drive-through this size. The trade-off is, uh, adding queuing. We could add more parking, but if we added more parking, we potentially lose some of our queuing. And our sense locally here is, let's get as much queuing on this site as we possibly can. But we could probably show you a plan, if you wanted to see it, that showed enough parking and less queuing, and you can make some determination that you wanna go in one direction or another. I would also note that this proposal would include a standalone kiosk for an ATM machine. It's not a drive-through machine, it's a park the car and get out or walk up to it type of machine, like the Bank of America kiosk in Pennardville at one of the plazas there, the Shaw's Plaza. We are proposing, or we act, we actually haven't proposed any real signage yet. Uh, I think Steve is suggesting either wall signage or freestanding signage, uh, but potentially not both. And that's something that we would need to make some determination on. We'd certainly like your input on, we'd like the Historic District Commission's input on. Any signage that we end up with, we are apt to need a variance for, because even if we get the use variance, we're gonna need a variance for having a different type of signage, no doubt, in, uh, in the RSBOD district. And that's kind of where we are at this point.
All right, Collis?
Um, I think the first thing that jumps out to me is left turns into the site from Mast Road, and what's that gonna do?
Yeah, uh,
To the traffic flow.
TF Marianne has already started doing some traffic counts, uh, at the Gulf Station, so we can get a really good sense as to what's there now. Uh, the, a couple of interesting traffic things are happening. Is, is the Pleasant Street Roundabout and the Wallace Road Roundabout. Wallace Road, it looks like it's going forward first. Pleasant Street is somewhere down the line. So there's a sense that what's gonna happen as a result of one or both roundabouts is there's gonna be some real slowing of traffic, uh, in front of this site. In fact, that entire distance, uh, from Pleasant Street all the way to Wallace Road. So that's gonna have to be factored in by our traffic engineering, and of course, we're gonna no doubt have to do a significant, uh, traffic report to show some of these things and, and identify what's going on. The other interesting thing is, across the street, there's an area where, uh, the embankment, uh, is built up and the sidewalks on the, on, on the far side of the embankment. Uh, I understand from DPW that right away in their plans is to actually, uh, move the sidewalk to the roadside and push that embankment further back. The interesting thing for us is it really increases site distances in both directions as, as we come around there. The, the building that's there now is a real negative aspect of the existing site distances coming out of or going into, uh, the Gulf Station. So just by taking it down, we're gonna kinda open up some of the traffic issues there. We're actually gonna open up some views of the mountain as you come up there as well. But, uh, that's gonna be, that's, that's gonna be a serious issue for us. Most of our traffic, we anticipate, and we should be able to have numbers at the appropriate time, will show what percentage of our potential customer base is actually gonna be southbound traffic in the morning. It's, you know, gonna pull off, get something and pull back, as opposed to northbound traffic in the afternoon, which is more likely, or less likely, uh, to actually use the facility, but more likely to have to make that left-hand turn if and when they do.
Well, I'm glad to hear we're gonna have better views of the towers on the mountain, that really makes me happy.
I wasn't in charge of the towers.
But my question is, like, I guess my question is, is there enough right-of-way on Mast Road to accommodate a slip lane for the left turns into?
Well, actually, I'll let Deb talk about that, 'cause she keeps mentioning such a, a thing.
Good evening, Deb Brewster for the record, project engineer with TF Marianne. We are, we are in the process of taking a look at the, the traffic. Uh, we did meet with Megan and Carl, uh, we've met with a number of committees. They have all provided traffic input. The one thing that I've always found in, through my experience, is that everyone knows something about traffic. And all the feedback that you receive, you know, we're documenting and we're, we're looking at. We are, uh, taking counts at the gas station. I think the analysis of that left-turn movement is going to, uh, be further developed when we can see the distribution at the gas station. You know, we're looking at both AM, we're gonna look at both PM. Where the, as far as the left-turn movement into the site in the AM, you know, there is another, another facility that not too far down the road, so we're not sure how many people would come back this way to ser, to, to go to this restaurant and take a left-in, but we wanna get those counts at the, at the existing gas station to see how many lefts-ins are, are being held there. As far as an additional lane on that corridor, it is narrow. We are out there taking some survey to, to evaluate that corridor. Uh, does it make sense to look at a, a third lane in there and transition it into the, uh, what is that side of the road? Knoll Crest Road and terminate it there? We're gonna take a look at those alternatives. I don't know that it makes sense, uh, but we, we are gonna take a look at it and see if it, it, it does make sense. We don't have the answers at this moment, though. It's really conceptual to get more feedback from you.
There is a slip lane already, it's on the, it's being used by the Gulf Station to bypass their traffic. I, I mean, and that's the reality of, of where they are there. I mean, our hope would be to make that more obviously a pedestrian way. Carl has suggested not to completely obliterate it for vehicle traffic, because that is such a tight site there, but at least make it clear that when there are people there, it's really a sidewalk.
And one of the things we're gonna try to evaluate as we're out there taking, uh, counts this coming week is really the courtesy. We find that this corridor, specifically in the morning, if someone is trying to make that movement, there'll be a courtesy gap. And when someone stops to let a vehicle out, you know, then the, the queuing, uh, on the main line will back up to some degree until the car, you know, egresses. So we're gonna take a look at that courtesy gap, see what's happening on the main line, and try to evaluate that as well.
We have, we have taken the view from the start, Collis, that if we can't make the traffic situation a wee bit better, this might not be the greatest thing to do.
Okay, as long as we're looking at it.
So that's really a key issue for us.
I drive it every day, and I don't see a whole lot of courtesy.
Oh, really?
Not stretch a mast road, at all.
Change your license plate numbers.
Just so, uh, the board is, is aware, as, uh, was mentioned by, uh, Tony, on the Pleasant Street Roundabout, Board of Selectmen has voted to put that into a CMAC grant along with the High Street intersection.
So that's, you know, a few years down the road.
Well, just, I, I guess I'm saying that so that everybody hears that, uh, because that intersection has been questionable as to whether or not they were gonna go forward with anything on it. And the board has voted to put it into that grant.
That's good to know. Tim?
You discussed the elevation changes for the, um, approach and for the pad for the building. How does that work with the adjacent properties, when you change the elevation dramatically and then the house next door? How does that, how are you gonna transition between the two properties?
What, uh, Deb Brewster with TF Marianne, what, uh, what we're observing is there's an eight-to-ten-foot elevation difference between the front of the site and the back of the site. Uh, the, uh, abutting properties in the rear do dip down, the, the same ten feet. As soon as we are beyond the envelope of the structure, we will then be able to dip down. So I think we're gonna be, we are gonna be a little bit higher than the abutting residences. I'd have to say that height is probably gonna vary between three and maybe five to six feet. We've left enough room on the side yard so that we could grade down gradually to that. We're also allowing enough room for ample landscaping panel and fencing to screen this parcel from the abutting properties. But there will be a slight elevation, great trade, more so on this side than this side. This one's actually a little bit more elevated than this side.
Okay, thank you. And to follow up, um, you've, you've taken this site and you've turned it into a mass of impervious surface. What direction do you propose to send the runoff water from the parking lot in the building? Or what are you gonna do with the water from the site?
Mm-hmm. Uh, that has been mentioned as a, an item for us to take a look at with, uh, with Megan and the DPW. We, we feel that, uh, the, our charge here would be not to send the water in any direction other than in, back infiltrate into the, to the ground system. We understand there are problems down in this area during heavy rainfalls, but we, the lifting of the site sort of makes it a natural situation for us then to provide the underground units that we can then put in underneath the site and then infiltrate it down into the, into the aquifer.
But you will have to have some sort of an overflow mechanism.
We, we like to have overflow mechanisms. The, uh, we, we're doing, we're doing some preliminary research for the front half of the site to overflow as an emergency into the city system along the corridor, there is a city system. And then the back overflow, we haven't taken a look at that so close because we are understanding, we wanna investigate some more, that there's been some flooding in this area on high, you know, really extreme cases, and I don't know if it flooded recently, I'd like to actually find that out. But, uh, there may be some opportunity for emergency down in this area as well. We understand that it does go off that way to the local stream system.
Yeah, and that, just to observe, that local stream system is currently overloaded with all the mountain water. So if any water was to go in the direction of Knoll Crest or Mountain Road, I think that would have an adverse effect on that downstream because...